I'm glad you're busy. Great day for you. So can you tell me something about you? आपने कथा एक टू बोलें और आज के कि कोर्टी से एक टू काइंडली बोलें प्लीज़
Okay, I would love to. So again, hi, everyone. My name is Lamia Hock and I'm a candidate for Buena Park City Council. I am currently a school board member for the Centralia School District. I'm also a city commissioner for the city of Buena Park. I grew up in Buena Park. This is my home. I absolutely love this city. And I just want to serve and do good when I'm not in public service. I am a professor. I teach at Chapman University. I teach in the education department. And I'm doing PhD in education. So as you can tell, education is a huge passion of mine and I continue to... I aspire to bring education as a priority on the city council. So please, everyone, I went to the talk room. Pray for me. Inshallah I can win. If I win, I'll be the first, uh, I'll be the first Bangladeshi American on Buena Park City Council. So please pray for me.
Thank you, Lamia. Appreciate it. तुम्हारा कैमन लगती से?
मुझे भी लगती से आप सब इसे हमारे लास्ट के सपोर्ट करते से अपकमिंग कमिशन एयर लेक्चन के जन्नत मैं सबके से दुआ एवं प्राप्त करना शुरू करती हूं सबके सपोर्ट जो तो बांग्लादेशी कमिटी जो अमेरिका रहस्य जे जे भवे पारे तुम सुनने में जे जे भवे पारे हमारे एक कैंपेने साज्जे देते हैं जो तो एक उत्तम को बांग्लादेशी में हमारे दुनिया पर ठीक है सिटी काउंसिल
Thank you. Let me say some one word, okay? One second, she say one word.
Right now?
Okay, let's take a... I've got long time. Do you want to... आप बालोस थे? भाई या कैमन अच्छे? बोले ना आपने इसे कि कोर्टी और आमदर कि कराउची?
आपने इसे आश्चर्य आपने तो गोरु दो जो आमदे बांग्लादेशी में श्री गांधी अच्छे सिटी काउंसिल Buena Park Lamia Hock आपना सबाई दो तो बोल देना जो आप पास रहे आपना इसे नीस की में होते बांग्लादेशी दोस्त आमदर तो बोली तो आमदर तो आने दो तो आपने आशा करते हैं तो आप इस वर्ष दो तो बना जन्नत
Thank you, Shamim Bhai. अनेक धन्यवाद को भालोस
आमा चलो शासन लिस्ट
है?
बालोस आपने सबाई मंडे
आमा भाई भाई
इल्कु भाई थैंक यू मंडे ते सबाई आशा जन्नत थैंक यू
मुरुबिद्दी शादी रिपोर्ट जगदन शामिम भाई
अरे उन्हें अब उन्हें बाय वेट बैठे
अनाम करें
इस बाय ऑफ फॉर्म सिस 1975 यहां आश्चर्य कोरिंग एनएसकी लेबिडी रहने देख लो एनएसकी लेबिडी वन ऑफ डी लक जिस फॉर्म इसे तक
भाई या टायर चाहती हो आपने आमदर तो छोटी ने अपने कथा बोले ना अपने कि किच्छु ना आमे हुदा हो दी है अपने नाम? आमा नाम Khaja Muttu एक उसे फेवरेली दिन शोकाले गेस्ट
आज आमी जाते पर ना आमी अब रूम रह गेस्ट स्लाम रूम रह थे गया स्लाम
बाबा माशाल्लाह
सब तो हो कैमन आमी आमा बो आर आमा बिट्टी टो डी बिट्टी टो आर
नाम तो बोले
कन्नाम
अपना
ओ आमा नाम टिटो शफिक टिटो स्लाम
ओ अच्छा आपने आमा शादा हसन फेसबुक हसन ना?
हसीब नहीं
Khaja Muttu
राइट राइट हसीब नहीं
सोनी एक पाक रमिकुरी शिफाई दुल्ला
I know that, yeah. सब इतना धन्यवाद आशा जन्नत
Thank you.
अमीश साहब ताला Lamia हस्बैंड आपने देर शकुलेर दुआ एवं सपोर्ट ग्राहक आमी अखाना मदे ये कोरो शुक्र ताजन्ना मी आमदे आश्के एमसी आमदे शौकरी को चिन्ह आगे करें आमदे साथी वालों के मोचन
Buena Park City Council Election. As a city council member, Lamia will be a part of a diverse team to help approve and oversee policies and things public safety, economic development, housing, transportation, and more. Before we continue tonight, I'd like to call Farukh Bouya. Please come up on the stage so we can all continue in a prayer.
अस्सलाम वालेकुम रहीम I'm requesting everybody to please recite Surah Fatihah one time, Surah Iqalas three times, and Durr Shariif three times. Bismillah, here Rabbil Amin. Alhamdulillah, here Rabbil Amin. Rabbil Amin, Waalaikum Aldeen. Yaakana Budhu, yaakana Stain. Ehdi na sirat al-mustaqim. Sirat allajin, alam taalahim. Gayron madu, bayalaihim. Aduallin. Ameen. Kul hu allahu ahad, allahu samad. Lamia li thalam yulad. Alamiya kul hu kufu anahad. Bismillah, here Rahman Raheem. Kul hu allahu ahad, allahu samad. Lamia li thalam yulad. Alamiya kul hu kufu anahad. Bismillah, here Rahman Raheem.
Supporting the global cause, supporting Bangladeshi cause, supporting all of our dreams. Thank you, Aric. Now, if I may, please request Farukh Bouya to come on stage to start with few words of wisdom and dua. If I can also request everybody, I know it's a big mingling time for all of us. सबाई जो दी आमरा एक टू निराप तकते पारी if we, if I may kindly request all of here for a moment of silence. सबाई के एक टू अनुरोध कोर्ट से किच्छु खोने जन्नत निराबोधा पालन कोर्ट
Your judgment and your decision, please help us and bless upon her your mercy. Subhanallah, wa qobbal jazat, amma yaasifun. Ya salaamun ala al-murstalin. Alhamdulillah, here Rabbil Amin. Laa ilaha illa allahu muhammad
For the Buena Park City Council, Lamia Hock. She is an elected school board member for the Centralia School District, City of Buena Park Committee Service Commissioner, and a professor and PhD student at Chapman University. Please, a round of applause for Lamia Hock. City of Buena Park and Artesia. The first person I would like to introduce is the special guest, Mr. Alitaj, Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Artesia and President of California Cities. The next person I would like to introduce is Mr. Connor Tratt, Council Member for City of Buena Park. Mr. Connor, can I please have you come to the stage? The next person I would like to introduce is our chief guest, Susan Sun, Mayor of the City of Buena Park. Our first speaker is going to be Mr. Alitaj.
Thank you, Sake. Good evening, assalamualaikum, ladies and gentlemen. It's absolutely my pleasure to be here. First of all, respectfully, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Tratt, it's absolutely an honor to be in your great city of Buena Park and also your great city of Buena Park. And congratulations on your run. It's absolutely fabulous to see you run for this office. I also want to recognize a few people, which is Lajook Hock, who's the father, right there, Lajook, the father of Lamia. Also, I want to recognize Lamia's mother, Porshida Hock. One very important person is Sadat Adam, our husband. Where is Sadat Adam? Right there. This is the immediate family of Lamia. And I want to recognize because these are the very important people who will actually be embarking on this journey of getting her elected as member of the council for City, great City of Buena Park. I've known Lamia for well over seven or eight years, even before she was elected to the school board. She is the extent of the game and tried the better shape that you came with, that you went to achieve it. So that's what I would say. I would turn back to Lamia or Sake this time.
To bring up is Connor Tratt, Council Member for City of Buena Park. So let's talk a little bit about service and public service. With me as a council member, what I'm looking for and what I think the community is looking for is first, someone who cares, who cares about the people. Someone who knows the people that they're going to be serving and someone who's willing to put in that work. With Lamia Hock, we are getting that here. Only person to run for city council, not just in the last decade, but in this millennium, since the year 2000, who was raised in Buena Park. And we need her voice and we need you to help her. There we go. And the next speaker I would like to bring up right here is Susan Sony, Mayor of the City of Buena Park.
Thank you, thank you. Wow, what an honor to be here tonight in this beautiful environment with these beautiful people. I love Lamia. She's one of the best people I know. She's... She's kind, she's compassionate, she's dedicated, she's brilliant. I don't know, she's gonna outshine me when she gets on council, but I still support her. She has been my appointee for the Community Services Commission in addition to the work she's done as a trustee for the school board. And I have a few commissioners that will call me every once in a while and make a suggestion of something they want us to do. Nobody calls me as much as Lamia. Nobody has as many ideas and as much excitement about doing things for our kids, for our parks, for our city. And I know she's gonna do an outstanding job sitting on the base there. Representation matters. For an extremely long time, the City Council Buena Park consisted of five white men. We've gotten a little extra diversity on the council since then. But it's very important that this community is represented by someone as outstanding, as brilliant and as committed as Lamia is. So please, support her, lift her up, keep her in your prayers, give her the morale that she needs to keep going when it gets tough. And it does get tough. Knocking on those doors and making those calls, it can be pretty exhausting. So let her know you're behind her and keep her supported with the money and the energy and the love that she needs to get there. Thank you so much.
And thank you so much, Aric. We really, can we have our hands together for this next batch of Bangladesh? Thank you. So, सबाई के अब अशंका धन्यवाद So who is Lamia? Do we know her? Lamia is a part of Buena Park for last 20 years. She grew up here, so she knows the grasses, she knows the roots. So she grew from these roots. She is in that noble profession of teaching in Chapman University, where she is bringing up our next generation ready for the upcoming world. Lamia is not only into education, but her other main core agendas are bidification and public safety. And she upholds education above all else. So can we please welcome her and just to welcome everyone one more time as... Okay, so as we know, we have among us the leaders from all aspects of आमी आज के आमदे शोमन शालपतर करणे Yeah, yeah, okay. So, and also, आमदे एक Buena Park के सबार पोरिचित Excuse me, sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather, so we can please forgive me. Rana Mahmood, President, Bangabundhu, Shanskritik Bangabundhu पोरिशत, Rana Mahmood. Kondukar Alom, Ex-President Bafla and President Bafla. Put our hands together for our pioneers, our inspirations.
सबाई के बिनीते भाग अनुरोध कोर्ट से जे आमदे समय शालपतर करणे आमरा जन्नत आमदे बुक्तो बोटा
I would like to thank you, our honorable Mayor Buena Park City. Thank you, all city council members. And thank you, Artesia City, our Alitaj. And thank you, community, all leader, member, एवं आमा भाई एवं सब कोर Thank you, आज के कष्ट करे आशा जन्नत, आज के एक मने वर्किंग दे आशा जन्नत, आज के मंडे सबाई कष्ट करे ऐसे और एक दूरांत ठेके तो सबाई के धन्यवाद आपने सबाई Lamia के सपोर्ट करें एवं आज के आपना एक टू फंडराइजिंग रन रहने आयोजक मर्सी, so please, आपने सबाई जे जे भाग एक टू सपोर्ट करें, thank you.
दो टू काज तो भादाभागे कोरेचे एक टू काज होसे शुद्रभागे आज के अनुसार टू शुरू करे दिएसे, आर एक टू वेपर होसे एक मिनट एक कथा शेष कोरेचे एक काज तो जो दी सबाई करते पारी, दारोइल हाय किंतु एक परे आमी जिया है कसे माइक्रोफोन देचे
Thank you. It is my great honor to share the stage with a fellow freedom fighter, yeah, our brother Bhai, our friend Tula Banush, Awan Bhai. And for the first time in Bafla's history, he came to the parade because the son of a freedom fighter became the president of Bafla. Today is a great pride for all Bangladeshis that we are here to celebrate the candidacy of Lamia Hock, a fellow Bangladeshi and who was born and brought up in Buena Park. This year was extra special for me. On my birthday, Raju and Lamia asked me to come to Lamia's home and that's where we strategized for the campaign. That was the best birthday gift that I had in my whole lifetime, that I could be there for her campaign. Thank you, Lamia, for stepping up. Thank you for being
We can use the envelopes which are provided on the table. We can give it to Talia, who is right there. Talia, can you please raise your hand? There she is.
Bismillah, Rahman Raheem. Ladies and gentlemen, especially, I'm so happy to see our mayor, Artesia, Ali Bhai, Buena Park Mayor, and other distinguished guests. Today is the most memorable day for me. I moved from New York 1982. The first day, I come to Buena Park. And I lost, I go to the prison, I lost three hours, two hours. Most memorable day. And another thing, Lamia, she's the first Bangladeshi in Southern California. First run for the council. This is so, I've congratulated for all of the Bangladeshi community, applause, thank you. And she's a wonderful lady. My request to each and everybody, please, this is most memorable day. Today is the 4th of March, almost 9:00 PM, 2024. Most memorable day. Please, please, for personally, I talked to all the Southern Californian people to please vote for her and please for the, collect the fund. And I always, with the group, with Buena Park, Artesia, or more than 5,000 people I know personally. And I request to everybody, please, help Lamia. This is our, I try to help her and just, we have been praying for her, please, God bless you. God bless United States of America. Assalamualaikum.
एक मिनट
धन्यवाद Whenever we are here, we much more will be in a voting campaign there. And we shall overcome, no matter what. Nine month आमरा Bangladeshi पे थी एवं एवर एलेक्शन में Lamia के आमरा देखो काउंसिल में उम्मीद आए जय पांगला
अशंका धन्यवाद
Last time I checked, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Assalamualaikum. I'm so happy, so excited because that girl is our daughter. Look at the stage. Most of people, you know everyone. Look at that person standing right in the side. आमा भाई, डॉ. Ravi Alom. एट बोला उद्देश्य होलो, आमदे कम्युनिटी किंतु एकन ओखानी नहीं आज के Ravi डॉ. आमा दा पाउखन आश्चे, आमदे कम्युनिटी लीडर आश्चे आमदे बाच्चा रा कांग्रेसमैन होवे, सीनियर डर होवे, that's our expectation. And एकारणे, आमरा सबाई सबाई के सपोर्ट देबो, आमरा झापिये पोर्बो आज के एकने जे गैदरिंग टा आमरा देखते बच्ची क्वालिटी एंड क्वांटिटी, आमी देखते बच्ची क्वालिटी पीपल आर हीरो तो एज नंबर बामरा अली भाई, there is two other mayor. We are huge quantity of people in LA, Buena Park, all over. Anyway, make a shot. Lamia, आमदे बाच्चा, किच्छु करना कमदे रह मुसलबान जे दिरोते से दे बोले गेले Yes, आमी शेटी बोल्बो, आमदे बाच्चा सक्सेस होवे एवं आर एक टू जिनी शामी बोलते चाहे सबाई के निये आमा हाथी जे इस साइन, Little Bangladesh, एट जन्म बादल भाई, बाच्चो भाई, शामिम भाई ना, एट आमदे बाच्चो गुला आगामी प्रजन्म जन्नत तुमरा एल गुला के शामने टिक निये जावे एवं आमा के जो दी के प्रश्न करे ये बादल भाई, Lamia मैं और होले की होवे होवे आमरा बाच्चो भाई सबाई जाने, 10, 15, 20 years ago, वो इच्छा गोस्तेरा वे डी कोरियन कम्युनिटी तो हैवे रैंक कंट्रोल We cannot do anything. She will do it. And
इंशाल्लाह
आमा छोटो भाई बोलची, आमी छोटो भाई बोलबो, Ravi के आमर काने एक टू खबर आश्चे, आमी नाम बोलबो ना पैंडेमिक के सबाई, शे एक बांग्ली के ता नीजे गारिंग टे कोरे निये शाबादी से आर की लगे भाई? I'm really
अशंका धन्यवाद
I still love you, my brother
अशंका धन्यवाद
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being with us, thank you so much. See if I can have the continuation with you.
Assalamualaikum, Bismillah Rahman Raheem. This most gracious, most merciful God. We are here for Lamia. Please, campaign, contribute and vote for her. Insha Allah, she will win. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable Buena Park. Artesia, respected councilman. She became a minister on her own right. And to us, she's like our daughter. But that's not the reason I'm asking you to vote for Lamia. Why Lamia? Lamia is a such
Most of your time, I'll give you a better America. So today, we are standing in the better America thanks to our forefathers, thanks to this amazing country where we were successfully melted in this amazing melting pot. So now, I'd like to call up on stage Mohammed Shamim Hussain, President Democratic Party, Bangladesh, Los Angeles Chapter.
Thank you, Assalamualaikum, Bismillah Rahman Raheem. So we know that we're gathering tonight here, we're so proud about that Samia, Lamia Hock. She's running for the council member. And you know this council member, it's not an easy job to do it. We need a lot of support and lots of money and also the volunteer to make her the city council. And also that this is the first time that Bangladeshi the lady is running for the city council.
कैमरा ऐप आसे, आमदे टेबलेट किंतु की अर्कोड आसे
Good evening, everyone, distinguished guest, our honorable mayor. Thank you for supporting Lamia Hock. And we are proud of her because she's the, our generation, future generation of Bangladesh-American community. We are proud of her. We are here, I drove 1 hour 45 minutes. I live in another city. But I just came to support her because she is our pride. She, वो यार पॉवर And we are the future generation, ए बोभिशत बंशो कर रहा जेखनी, जो तो दूरी होकना केनो, Southern California जेखनी ए मेन स्ट्रीम एसदे जोड़ीत होते चाहिबे आमा मन होय, आमदे एक टू नोइटिक दायित्व, आमरा जन्नत शेखने छूटे जाई एवं आमरा जन्नत तादेर के संभून्नभागे शार्जल कोरी कान एक, एखाने, आमदे देश्या दलिया राजनीति कोरे कोनो लाभ होवे ना जो दी आमरा मेन स्ट्रीम एल नार होते पारी शेटी आमदे माथा के ऊचकोरे दाराबे, बांग्लादेश की ऊचकोरे दाराबे एवं आमरा होब गोरबानी तो आमी, आर कथा बाराबार, thank you so much. Here is my endorsement for Lamia Hock.
Thank you so much, Shiper Choudhury, Ex-President Bangladeshi Minister.
Many of you may not know who I am, but some of you may, so I do want to take a moment to introduce myself. The City of Buena Park is my home. I have lived here for over 20 years, maybe 15 years. I grew up here, I went to school here during my youth. I volunteered for the city. I attended many, my brother and my brother Raju, at our park. And this is also the same city that I met my husband in, so I don't know, he's not even listening. Still not. But you can, as you can tell, this city is very much embedded into my life. Helping others is a calling for me. I currently serve as a school board member for the Centralia School District. I am a community services commissioner for the city, as you've all heard tonight. And when I'm not in my leadership role, as I teach at Chapman and I'm doing my doctorate in education. So, and thank you, thank you. Those classes reported 10:00 PM are rough, so, especially after work. So as we embark on this endeavor together, I want to remind you of what truly matters. It's not just about winning an election, it's about transforming lives and ensuring every individual is empowered to reach their fullest potential. Your support will help me become the first Bangladeshi American to serve on this I aim to be a voice for the South Asian community. Location for tonight, I also want to thank Little Datta, Dasli Mankha. Thank you for sponsoring the food tonight for everyone's dinner. Thank you both, I don't know if you're here or wherever you are, but thank you both for supporting my campaign. And I also want to thank every single person that volunteered and helped tonight make
Every little support count, guys.
Absolutely. Every little
जो आमा नाम ली, हो गए तो आप शो
Every little support count.
A little amount every month will help a lot.
That's a very good point. It's an excellent point. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I forgot to mention that Assalamualaikum, नालसे मोर्टल जा की ओस्ते, आपने कॉल आसे मुझे त्यास सोलन
She's not giving us the fish, she's teaching us how to fish.
Exactly, there you go. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for teaching us how to fish. So, ladies, Madam Mayor has made some contribution and very encouraging. So thank you, Madam Mayor. She's a lady. Absolutely, thank you. I'm an old Madam Mayor for well over eight years. And she's been a very supporter of my campaign, she's been a supporter of my campaign and everybody else around, anywhere in Orange County and across California. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for your leadership in this city and across California. I've known her, not just from the city, but also from the league of California cities, which is in So, if we want to see Lamia in the same position, insha Allah आपने कि in next few years, in the City of Buena Park, the way the government works भाई या के बोलची Five members of the council बालोस थे And each member of the council takes the term to be the mayor. How much did you write? किच्छु बोलबा, बोलो ना ओ, बिल्डिंग, okay. All right, so But that, I'm going to turn back to Sake for now and I may come back again, so thank you.
आपना जाने दे कोहिनु भाई, कोहिनु रहमान कोहिनु रहमान उन्हें होछे गये, आपना जरा बांग्लादेश चिन्ह आने उन्हाके उन्हें महावरणे एक टू कृतिक खेलवा छे ना से महावरणे कृतिक खेलवा, Buena Park के लिए बासिंग दा कोहिनु रहमान भाई के, आमी मनचे आओ जाना थे I'm willing to come to you. Any amount you can pledge, you have a platform there. Write on the platform, and then somehow, online or by cheque, you can pay your bill. So please, open your hand.
Good. Assalamualaikum. I'm proud of Lamia Hogg. I was born here. This is for our Bangladeshi. Thank you for supporting Lamia. And... There are so many Bangladeshi here, I'm willing to do it. There are many brothers here, who are here, who are here. I'm really, in this, I'm really supporting Lamia. Thank you very much.
I took over 1,000, 1,500 dollars. From my family, 1,500 dollars donation. And it's not end, it's just beginning and we will go much more, inshallah.
Inshallah, inshallah, thank you.
And also, like Bala will give her 100 placards putting the, you know, on the field. The field placard is like 100, can you count the stars?
Do you have a plan to do that? Ismail, ismail, please, do that.
Assalamualaikum.
We're all of us. 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 Today, we're all of us. Our Raju brother, he's fighting. I'm willing to, Raju brother, you've won, you're here. You've won, Lamia's won. Lamia, we're the mayor, not the people. The people, we're the people. Everyone, say, Lamia, Lamia. Lamia, Lamia. Vote for Lamia.
Thank you.
You've got medical treatment.
Sabine's...
I'm not wearing a shirt. I'm wearing a label on my shirt. I'm wearing it.
She will leave. I always say, thank you, all the best for you.
Thank you.
Say it again. China? Thank you. You're laughing very well.
Let's start. What are you doing here? Can you tell me about something about you and what you're doing today here?
Yes, okay, Assalamualaikum, everyone. My name is Lamia Hogg and I'm a candidate for Buena Park City Council. Today, we are celebrating with the Bangladeshi community. Today is a meet and greet. I would love, we've already had a great amount of people that's here to get to know who I am and inshallah, if I win Buena Park City Council, I will be the first Bangladeshi American to serve. So we're breaking history and we are, you know, this is not just my journey, this is everyone's journey.
Oh, great.